It's from Nancy LaCarne.
LaCarne? L O I A. No, not yet. All right, you're gonna log everybody in right now. Mr. Gibbons, can I get your signature? You know, we'll do it when we're going to the second class. We'll do it when we're going to the second class. You wanna do it now?
Mr. Dr. Martinez, you're on mute. Mr. Demakoff, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
You're very low.
Can you hear me?
Very low.
Very low?
Let me see if I could fix it on this end.
Okay. How about now? Any better, Angela? Angela, Dr. Bender, can you hear me?
Yes, Wayne, we can hear you.
Again?
Yes, we can hear you, Wayne.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Bender, can you hear me?
Carrie, were you able to hear me right now? You're a little bit low, but I can hear you. Now I'm better, right?
Oh, now you're perfect, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
What did I do?
You're...
I wasn't giving it to you.
No.
Okay. So let's see.
Where's the audio on here? Is yours low?
The one right next to the R. Yes. I've been turning up and down.
But I can't even hear it.
Do we have everybody? Mr. Demakoff, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, we're just checking the system. We're just waiting for one board member to log back in, and then we're gonna start. Thank you.
You don't see me. I'm in. I'm the first one. Don't worry about me. Is Berlinda in yet or not? Who, Berlinda? We're just missing Berlinda.
Linda was in and then she left. I don't know if she was having problems. Yes, she is.
Yeah, the way this works is you should be able to keep yourselves unmuted, keep yourselves muted the whole time, and just speak into your mic whenever you talk. Like, I'm not muted, right? I have myself muted on the Chromebook, but the public can hear me. As Mr. Demakoff just, you know, noted. So everybody, keep yourselves muted on the Chromebook and speak directly into your microphone, and the public will be able to hear you. As well as...
Sounds good.
Mr. Tevis, can we start with the flag, so that we're still waiting for people to...
We're still waiting for one board member to... Okay, she is in now. Okay, we have all the board members. You can start, sir.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
New Jersey... There is no sound coming through.
I can't hear anything in there.
Went down.
...will speak and be seen by the board when participating virtually, telephonically via Zoom. Individuals participating virtually that wish to make comments during public participation will need to raise their hand by clicking the icon at the bottom of their Zoom window. Individuals participating by telephone that wish to make comments during public participation will need to hit star nine on their telephone to raise their hand. The business administrator or board secretary will then unmute individuals one at a time to speak in the order that their hand was raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevis. A roll call, please?
Yes. All right, just flipping there. Okay, Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mr. Phytros?
Here.
Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Dr. Martinez?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Theman?
Here.
Mr. Verselli?
Here.
Mr. Cathcart? Not present. President Gibbons?
Here.
Quorum present. Also present are Dr. Angela Bender, Mr. Tevis, Business Administrator, Mr. Demakoff, State Monitor, and Board Attorney Carrie Wright.
Thank you.
Do you have any minutes to move? Jim?
Yes, sir, we do. We have minutes from the meeting. Stand with me one moment, please. From the February 17th board meeting and March 3rd board meetings.
I shall move.
Mr. Theman, thank you.
Second.
My second was...
Mr. Gomes.
Mr. Gomes, thank you. Any comments, questions regarding minutes from February 17th, 2021, and March 3rd, 2021? Seeing none. Mr. Theman?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
And President Gibbons?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do we have communications from our committee meetings? Anybody like to start? I'm sorry, communications from Jim?
No communications to see. Just one quick update. The architect has started moving forward with the facility project initiatives contained in the current year, 2021 budget, as far as Department of Education applications to the state for review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Now move on to committee reports.
Do we have anything from personnel? Ms. Rodriguez, do we have anything from social justice and...
Yes, we... Well, yes, we do. We have faculty. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so Faculty and Programs Committee met on March 23rd. We met at 4:30. All committee members were in attendance. And in addition to the committee members, we had administrators, Dr. Bender, Mrs. Gonzalez, and Dr. Haynes. We discussed having the possible board, the school board retreat, and President Gibbons will collaborate with Dr. Bender and Mr. Tevis. Possible topics will be Vincent... Well, student achievement and/or strategic planning. We also discussed the Academic Affairs Social Justice Committee. Dr. Martinez will chair the subcommittee. We met on January 27th. We also met on March 4th. And Jamie Lomax actually presented at that meeting, and there were... All committee members were in attendance. The committee members included parents, Mrs. Marin, Mrs. Morales, Mrs. Sadler, and also all committee members from the... and also all committee members from the Faculty and Programs Committee. Administrators, Dr. Bender and Mrs. Gonzalez were in attendance too. And to social workers, Mr. Jarvis, and also Nikki, Mrs. Share, were in attendance. We also discussed the Sustainable Jersey for School Program, the resolution that was passed on February 5th, 2020. At this point, the school, the only school that's registered, is the high school, and they registered on February 10th. And the future, we will have a future Faculty and Program Committee on Thursday, April 29th. Our goal is to meet at least one time, once a month.
Thank you very much, Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee O'Neil, do you have any?
Yes, the Policy Committee met yesterday, and we discussed an update to our school volunteers and volunteer coaches policy. We also set up a date of May 1st for the deadline for our board members to complete the superintendent evaluations, and then we would discuss.
Thank you, Trustee O'Neil. Trustee Fernandez, finance?
We plan to meet sometime next week to go over the finance, sir.
Thank you. Does that conclude our reports? Buildings and grounds. Yes. Would you like to speak on that?
Yes, Mr. Catherine is not here, so I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
We had a meeting of buildings and grounds. Mr. Kelly, who was the engineer from Boswell Engineering, came in, and we discussed the eight parking spaces that we're going to use or they want to use for the nature walk and then various where equipment's going to go. And as that left, he's going to do an overlay with the map that he has and some aerial photographs, and we'll see where everything is going to lay. And we'll speak about that again. The interim Business Administrator talked about our new facility projects. Tom Verselli commented on the acoustic dampening will be needed at the high school gym once the ceiling tiles are removed. We also discussed about the sprinkler pipes that were broken. Committee discussion of COVID-19 related health and safety items. And the committee chair suggested a memo be sent to the staff that doors must be kept shut and locked at all times. That concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Theman. Dr. Bender, Superintendent's report?
Yes. Mr. Demakov, Ms. Wright, can you hear me? Mrs. Rodriguez, can you hear me? Okay.
I can hear you.
Can you please bring Nurse Aguilar forward? While you do so, I'm just going to give a couple, and then I'll return a couple of notes. Spring recess is almost here. It'll be April 19th through April 23rd. We return on Monday, April 26th. Kindergarten registration is open. Our new website is up and running. We are very pleased with the look. We are now in the process of tweaking the pages and the attachments because now the most of the control is now on us. Children and adults, I'm going to ask that those that are not vaccinated, after travel, you must quarantine. But Nurse Erin, is she on? Okay, Nurse Erin.
Hello. Can you hear me? Okay. So, just to pick up where Dr. Bender left off. So, the state of New Jersey and New Jersey Health Department has adopted the new guidelines pushed out by the CDC last week as far as traveling goes. As long as you're fully vaccinated for over two weeks, we will not require you to quarantine after domestic travel. And again, the CDC is saying that this is essential travel, not non-essential travel. As far as students go, if students are not vaccinated, they will be required to quarantine for a minimum of seven days as long as they're tested between day three and five, and they come back negative. If they refuse to get tested, they do have to quarantine for 10 days. This also applies to any staff member who does not fit the criteria as being vaccinated for over two weeks prior to their leave for any travel. Hopefully, not too many are traveling during spring break. Do want to just touch base a little bit on the numbers in town. Since we, I think it's been over a month, we're looking at almost 200 new cases of COVID in the Village of Mitchell Park, which is a little concerning. We're seeing quite an increase of activity going on pretty much across the state. At one point, a few weeks ago, we had some yellows in the state of New Jersey. The entire state is now back up to orange. So, activity is being seen across all of New Jersey, especially here in Mitchell Park. We are seeing some cases within the buildings. We're seeing students reporting. I feel like we would need a little bit more reporting and some parents to kind of jump on board and keep kids home as soon as they're not feeling good. Even if it's a stuffy nose and a little bit of congestion, we're finding that those are the cases that we're seeing with these kids. Those are the symptoms. Very, very mild symptoms are occurring in the younger population. So, parents may think it's just an allergy. It might just be the weather change. We're finding out a lot of these cases are COVID-related. So, we need parents and students to continue to do their best. If you're not feeling well, please reach out to your nurse right away. Stay home. Reach out to us. Let us give you guidance of what you should do. We're better safe than sorry. We want to keep the spread down. To date, as of right now, even with the cases that we've had and the classes, rooms that have been shut down, we are still at a zero transmission as far as activity within our building. Anything that's happened is happening outside of the school, and the students are bringing it into the building, but it's not being transmitted from one student to another or staff member within our building. I think all the things that we've put in place between the social distancing, the plexiglass around the desk, keeping masks on, windows open, trying to keep the kids separate from each other is really working. What we're doing is working. We hope to continue that over the next couple of months. Dr. Bender, anything specific other than that you'd like to know about?
No, I think that wraps it up. Thank you, Nurse Erin. I'm just going to stress to the parents to please help us out. We don't want to close classrooms down. I don't want to close schools down. It's inevitable, if children are coming in, that those measures have to be taken. And unfortunately, when it continues to a level that we have to call parents and say, please don't send your children into this entire class because we don't have a substitute, that also causes a problem. So, again, I'm asking everyone to cooperate and, you know, be courteous of the fact that there's other people that are involved. Parents that want to send their children to school, we want you here. So, again, be mindful of the practices. Thank you, Nurse Erin.
Dr. Bender, if I may?
Sure.
Nurse Aguilar, is it a true statement that we have not had any evidence of having an outbreak on site at the schools? No kid-to-kid transmission, no?
No kid-to-kid transmission within our buildings at this point. We all threw all of the contact tracing, and there has been quite a bit that's gone on lately. We cannot connect one child to another. There have been no transmission of cases. What we are seeing is transmission happening outside of here. It's what kids are doing outside of the building, and that comes across the high school, middle school, and elementary levels. I think, you know, now that parents are starting to begin their vaccination process, they are maybe are lessening up a little bit. We're kind of getting a little bit lazy on what we're really supposed to be doing, and we're starting to see what's happening. Parents aren't testing positive because they're vaccinated, but these kids are starting to become, they're contracting it. And it's unfortunate because it's the younger population. You know, it's hard. It's very hard on a younger population. It's easy to contact trace with the older kids, but when you get to kindergarten, first, second, third grade, you're talking about smaller children, and they're trying their best. But we're trying to be super careful. And if we are, if there's any doubt in our mind that we might not be able to say, this one was exposed, this one wasn't exposed, Dr. Bender and myself have just decided, let's be safe and shut down a classroom and be careful rather than take a chance. My goal is to keep this at a zero transmission, and we're trying our best.
I just want to commend you and Dr. Bender and all the teachers because clearly we're doing a good job in the classrooms of, you know, given how much community spread we have. The fact that we haven't had outbreaks in the school, you know, again reinforces the idea that our schools right now are the safest place for our kids to be.
Yes, I just want to, you know, add to that. I'm very proud of the staff and how hard they are working to assure that all students are following the rules. And those that are a little older and they break the rules on purpose are being dealt with very well. So, parents, for the little ones, I commend those that have taught their children to wear their mask and how important it is. And, you know, big shout out to our custodial staff, the administrative staff. Everyone here in the district has gone above and beyond to really assure that every, all of our measures are safe. So, thank you to parents and teachers and administration and staff, support staff as well. That now I'm going to continue, Nurse Erin. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so there was big news today from my educational colleagues. No NJSLA. Woo-hoo. That means our state testing. This is an announcement that came to us from NJASA, which is the Superintendent's Association, NJPSA, which is the Principals Association, and NJEA, which is the Association for Teachers. We are pleased that the U.S. Department of Education has stated that New Jersey's plan to replace the NJSLA standardized tests with other more appropriate assessment tools fully complies with federal requirements under ESA. New Jersey students will not have to see their instruction time interrupted to take tests that are not helpful or appropriate under current conditions. Districts and the state will be able to use alternative forms of assessment to gather useful data that will help identify and support student needs. This is a win for New Jersey students and families as we continue our work to support the social, emotional, and academic needs of our students during and after this pandemic. I am very proud to share, as a district, we began using Lincoln this school year, which not only provides benchmark assessments, it also collects alternate forms of data in useful database. Our teachers have received professional development training and are using it throughout our district. As the state requires, again, data collection reports on student progress, we will continue to use our programs, again, such as Lincoln, AmesWeb, Leveled Literacy Intervention, which is known as LLI, and Sondays, all programs that I, that our board has supported us in purchasing. That was part of last year's initiatives that are now this year's work ahead and to provide us with better data, both these NJDOE data collection reports and to also inform us how our students are performing and to guide us in our intervention and remediation programs. Thank you, Board, for supporting those initiatives because, once again, we are ahead of the curve. Now, a little shout out to our elementary schools. Special shout out to our three elementary school students, district schools, who are safety monitors. They have been providing social, emotional lessons to the younger students in all grades as well as supervised tutoring sessions for students that are in need of some sort of academic support. We continue to utilize the student enrichment programs provided by our staff during afternoon sessions. These are free opportunities for our students to continue their learning and explore potential new interests. The Scarlet Quill Junior Group is working hard on their writing, and they are excited for the next publication. Please continue to follow the social media for each of our schools as well as read their newspapers and their broadcasts. On the middle school level, middle school students had the opportunity to enter a writing concert, contest sponsored by the Ridgefield Park Police Department and Bergen County Community Engagement Task Force. The winning entry was submitted by Janice Ramos, an eighth-grade student. Janice was presented with her new laptop at the police department this past Thursday evening in the presence of our RPPD, Ms. Theman, the middle school principal, and the Ramos family. I'm also happy to share that the first runner-up for the contest was Abdullah Ahmed, who was presented a certificate by the PD this Tuesday, and Ms. Perron and Ms. Theman attended. Congratulations to both of our students. Congratulations also goes out to Ms. Perron because both of them are her students. On the high school level, a lot of great things happening, as you know. This week, our students enjoyed their first wrestling match. This was certainly enjoyed by all students and spectators. Congratulations to our athletes for exemplifying the meaning of being flexible. Ellen Martinez placed fourth in the Client Service category of the state FBLA competition. That is a new program this year. Thank you, Board, again. That was an initiative from last year, and I brought in this year, and look at how great it's turned out already. She will be competing at the Nationals in May, June. Only the top five advance to the Nationals in each category. This was our first year of FBLA, and it was offered here, and we are very proud of Ellen and all of the students who participated at both of the regional and the state levels. I want to give you a big sports update. Our Zapatelli sisters in wrestling qualified for the state tournament. Yay! Kayla won the regional championship at 151, and Teresa finished fourth at 121. Please join me in congratulating the following members of the boys' basketball team for their postseason honors and recognition following their 11-four season and co-big North American championship. Jenzy Reyes, Reyes, first-team All Bergen County by the BCCA. First-team All Big North American. First-team All North Jersey Group Two by the record varsity aces. Honorable mention, All Big North Conference by NJ.com. Jenzy, congratulations. Joining him is Romel Camillo. Third-team All Bergen County by the BCCA. First-team All Big North American. Honorable mention, All Big North Conference by NJ.com. Congratulations, Romel. We're cleaning up, right? AJ Huddleston, first-team All Big North American. Congratulations. Jose Muniz, second-team All Big North American. Congratulations. Sayam Safar Dar, I'm sorry, Sayam, that I pronounced your name. Honorable mention, All Big North American. The spring season is upon us, and we are looking forward to baseball, softball, track and field, and tennis competitions. Curriculum and instruction. Let me give you a quick update. Spring testing has started with access for ELLs, our English-language learners. Our administrative team, I'm happy to say, has been working collaboratively to focus on both the K-6 students, who are being provided with remote after-school learning programs, and our 7th through 12th grade students, who are providing, we're providing a gentle motivational nudge to move them forward. We have formed and convened a summer session planning committee. I want to thank everyone who has volunteered to be on that committee that will help transform our K-5 summer planning offerings beyond just the worksheets and the packets that we were familiar with to project-based learning, field trips, and other investigations. Grade 6 through 12 summer offerings to focus on more in-person and credit recovery support programs. We continue to run district-wide afternoon staff, Wednesday PDs, currently focusing on our next, which is virtual field trips, social justice, and re-engaging our struggling students. And again, Board, thank you for supporting our last year's initiatives that are this year because we are really doing well by them. Thank you again. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mr. Demakov, Monitor's report?
Yes. This evening, my Monitor's report will be done in the form of reading a memo that I will be sending out to the board following this meeting. And the memo is dated April 7th, 2021. And the memo starts out, and it says, Dear Ridgefield Park Board of Education, In May of 2016, a state monitor was appointed to provide direct oversight of the Board of Education's business operations and personnel matters in the Ridgefield Park School District. On June 30th, 2016, the district received a $2.5 million interest-free loan from the state of New Jersey due to the deficit incurred from prior years. In order to stabilize the financial position of the district, many educational classroom teaching advancements and facility repairs and improvements were stopped, reduced, or eliminated. There was also a significant reduction in staff. The state monitor on numerous occasions stated there must be total cooperation between the county, state administration, Board of Education, and the state monitor to correct or eliminate the areas that caused the deficit. and the state monitor to correct or eliminate the areas that caused the deficit. The district could only regain a stable financial position if all parties were transparent and discussed all proposed actions and their financial impact with the state monitor prior to resolutions being prepared for Board approval. With everyone working together for the betterment of the students, staff, and taxpayers of Ridgefield Park, with no surprises for the state monitor or district administration, positive results did occur. This is well documented in the annual audits and the budgets that included and continue to include educational improvements, advances in technology, and numerous facility projects completed or in progress. While the district has moved forward, more work is still needed. For more than four years, all parties have worked together in a professional and productive manner, and the results are apparent. However, in the last few months, the previous productive approach to moving forward has changed. No longer is the state monitor notified in advance of proposed actions to be taken by the Board. The state monitor was not informed that the Board was placing a Board resolution on the agenda that has financial implications until after it was done. A Board resolution was also modified without any discussion with the state monitor. The state monitor asked the Board to copy him on all emails to the administrative staff, especially those that might have financial consequences. While the majority of the Board has done this, others have done it selectively. This type of behind-the-scenes activities show a total disrespect for the state monitor personally and total disrespect for the position of a state monitor. Let me be very clear. The Board of Education has the authority to place resolutions on the agenda and vote accordingly. The state monitor also has varying degrees of authority as outlined in 18A and has, and will continue to exercise that authority if and when needed. I asked the Board to work with the state monitor for the betterment of students, staff, and taxpayers of Ridgefield Park. Communication must be part of going forward. In an effort to ensure that this Board communicates with the state monitor, the following will be implemented effective immediately. One, if the superintendent and/or Business Administrator Board Secretary is contacted by any member and instructed to prepare or modify a Board resolution, no action will be taken until a conference call is made between the Board Member, Superintendent, Business Administrator Board Secretary, and the State Monitor to discuss the financial impact on the district for the present and future. Two, once the State Monitor has determined that the Board resolution would be in the best interest of the district financially or have no financial impact, then the resolution will be placed on the agenda. Three, no Board resolution will be modified after the agenda is sent to the Board prior to the public meeting. Modifications to Board resolutions will only be made as amendments and will only be made at the public meeting. The State Monitor was appointed to restore financial stability and move the district forward educationally as well as financially. We can do it together or separately. That choice is yours, but it will be done. I asked the Board to join me for the students and taxpayers they represent. Copies of this memo going to the Superintendent, Mr. Glenn Forney, Deputy Assistant Commissioner of Finance, James Tevis, Interim Business Administrator Board Secretary, and Kerry Wright, Board Attorney. Board members will be receiving this following the meeting. And that is my report, and Mr. Tevis, copy of this memo should be put into the minutes of the Board meeting for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demikov. And I will speak about the resolution FI-164 when we go over that. Thank you. We're going to move on to citizens' comments on agenda items.
Again, for public attending, just raise your hand by one of the methods I described at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, I'm gonna bring in Christine Ramos.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can, Ms. Ramos. Please, please, uh, your name and address, please.
Yes, Christina Ramos, 382 Teneck Road.
Thank you.
Um, yes, I'm, I'm questioning F-1163 about the, the loan that we are planning to pay in advance. This is an interest-free loan. And I'm sure you all have been advised that an interest, I mean, I mean, I don't see, understand why we are paying an interest-free loan ahead of its scheduled time, being that it's an interest-free loan and where we can use the money as we probably had budgeted for or plans to use that other money for. So can somebody let me know why we're doing that?
I'm gonna speak about this when we talk about finance, but I will say that we do have a state debt and money that we owe. And until it's paid off, it is a bite on the community. And I will also say that with discussions with administration, no educational initiatives will be cut at all.
Okay, I'm a little concerned with that because I've heard that in the past and the, you know, the opposite happened. You know, everything went south. So, you know, I'm really concerned with, you know, that, that move and I hope it's discussed further. I also have been meaning to ask about Little Ferry's tuition and contracts. How has that been going? Have we been paid for the $251,541.71 that was owed back in June, on June 30th of last year? Well, what are the, how did the negotiations looking with the tuition and the contracts? And before you say you can't talk about it, if we're having this information being, you know, publicized out in the papers of the Bergen record and stuff, I'm sure that we can talk, discuss it, you know, in front of the community.
Thank you.
I can address that.
Yes. Thank you, Jim.
Uh, certainly. Okay, so, yes, Little Ferry does make their payments every month. We bill them and they pay every single month. That's been going on and that has continued even through contract negotiations, which is over really a different matter about the contracts. But that does continue and we track it very carefully and they diligently pay their bills on time.
I feel like, I feel like we're, we're spending a lot of legal, you know, money on representation in, in all this and it seems like this has been ongoing long-term. And we're still spending a lot of our money, you know, the town's money to, for legal representation.
I'm sorry.
When, when do we see our end result for this? Because I don't understand why this has to have been dragged on for so long. I mean, this has been years of, you know, if somebody did them a favor long ago, then they need to go knock on that person individual favors, but the community, the RP taxpayers of Ridgefield Park do not owe them anything. We didn't make.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. We're gonna move on to the next caller.
Uh, Mrs. Lloyd Connor, could you bring the next person in, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can I have your phone?
Ed DeSantis, 15 Homestead Place, Ridgefield Park.
I'm sorry, what was the name again? Because your, your screen name says something different.
Uh, that's my wife's computer remote.
Okay, please proceed.
I'm sorry, we're, we're having connection issues.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, you got my name, right?
No, can you please repeat it?
Oh, repeated, okay. Ed DeSantis, 15 Homestead Place.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Uh, question back on FI-163. We have this, this two and a half million dollar loan that, that came from the state of New Jersey at no interest. Now, going back to what Christina Ramos had said, we have, we have money that's not costing us anything as a district. Um, and we'll get into the, uh, the monitor part of that in a second. But this is not cost us any money. You have a school budget. If you're paying back money on this interest-free loan, is the money coming out of the current budget?
Thank you.
Is that a question?
Yeah, the question is, is the money coming out of the current budget?
With, the loan is paid out of the current budget.
Right, so if you're gonna pay an additional amount on the loan, that's coming out of the current budget. So what part of the approved budget is it gonna come out of?
No educational initiatives will be cut.
That, that doesn't answer the question. Sorry, Mr. Gibbons, but what part of the budget will?
I can't answer, I can't answer that question.
We can't at the moment either.
That's, that's for the Board to decide.
Well, the thing is, now we have a loan that really is interest-free. You're gonna take money out of the current budget to repay it, which makes no sense. I mean, financially, it makes no sense. The money, the money's not costing anything to be there. And from what Mr. Demikov said, this wasn't discussed with the monitor, which is all the more reason in my mind why the Board needs a state monitor. This is a pretty obvious situation that the state monitor came with that package. And the state monitor can stay whether or not the loan is paid off or not. The Board definitely, and I don't know who the Finance Committee is at this point, definitely is missing the boat on the fact that there's money available. If there's money available, that either can go to education or it can go to the buildings, any kind of improvements, anywhere that money can be used, that money's not.
Apologize, Mr. DeSantis. Thank you very much.
Are you cutting?
Okay, our next participant. Kathy Tabasco was currently on. Do you have a question?
Yes, hi. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, state your name and address.
Kathy Tabasco, 22 Teneck Road, Ridgefield Park.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, I hope everybody is well and safe. My question too is over this $500,000. You guys are making great progress with building grounds, improvements to the schools. I see that, you know, books and everything were being purchased in the new budget. My question to you, as a finance person myself, if you have this $500,000 and you guys do have a history of running into budget issues, why are we sending back a half a million dollars on top of 250 that we're, or 250,000 that you're already paying? Why are we not either, one, leaving it in the coffers in case we do run into another budget issue? One, continuing the amazing job that you guys are doing on your buildings and grounds and Dr. Bender, under your helm, these things are getting done and they're moving expeditiously. Um, I know there are other things that schools need and other books and updated equipment. Why are we not using that money that we have available to us now? Instead of, let's say, in a year when you don't have it anymore and now all of a sudden we're in a crunch to find money and there's things that have to be cut off or teachers laid off or aides laid off or use the half a million dollars and let's get more aides in the schools?
Thank you.
So I don't understand why we are sending back an additional on top of what you're already paying them. Why are we not using it for our children now when this is no effect on the town? Not paying that extra half a million.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tabasco.
Okay, next participant. Jimmy Coloma.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Okay, uh, name and address, please.
Jimmy Coloma, 145 Poplar. Okay, thank you. So I, I think it's kind of, uh, repeating the prior questions already. I guess from a financial perspective, don't understand why we're paying back money that, why, why we're in such a rush to pay back money that is free. I mean, the best money is free money. And to piggyback off what was already said, you guys are doing a great job with the infrastructure, with the curriculum, with the facilities. I was luckily able to go to one of my son's games this year in the gym and I happened to have to go to restroom. My God, the restroom is absolutely beautiful. I mean, I've been in other schools in Burn County and our schools do not compare. So I would also agree. And again, reiterate what was already stated. Why not keep the money? Because if it's coming out of an existing budget, that means that something is going to suffer. Whether it be curriculum, whether it be infrastructure, whether it be grounds, whether it be music, arts, whatever it may be. So just want to reiterate, I don't understand why we would look to quickly pay back something that is being given to us for free.
And thank you for that, and I'll reiterate that no educational initiatives will be cut. And I'll speak further on this during the resolution. No educational initiatives will be cut.
Well, I, I don't want to focus on education.
I'm sorry.
I cut him off by accident.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Connor.
Okay, next attendee. Christine Ramos.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm back again.
We do ask that you let the regular public speak before you come back for a second turn.
Okay, but it'd be nice if you don't get cut off in the middle of answering, asking a question.
I don't believe I cut you off the first time, man. I, I, I mean, I didn't.
It seems like that.
Direction to the board.
Okay.
There is a time limit because, you know, we do at times have a lot of public that want to voice their opinion.
Okay. Well, just to piggyback off and to respond also to Mr. Demikov's statement that he made, I think that is extremely disappointing to hear that, you know, these things are happening once again where communications is falling short. And he's here for a reason. And, you know, whoever needs to hear this, you know, it may be, it needs to be repeated again. You know, the Board represents the students and taxpayers of this town. So we need to stay on board and remember what we're there for. You know, he's here for a reason and he's not here for his own well-being. He's here looking out for the interest of the town and the students. Obviously, they couldn't get it right before and it's going down that road again. And I really hope that, you know, you, whoever needs to hear this are aware, their eyes are watching. You know, a lot of us are not, you know, we're, we're pretty smart when it comes to financial decisions and when like one, like one that's being read right now is clearly not a very smart one. And the money must be coming from somewhere.
I just want to reiterate as well that in the Finance Committee, we have three finance professionals, including two accountants that oversee millions of dollars of budgets as well. Um, and our administrator is extremely competent. Thank you.
Well, this decision about getting this advance, this loan paid in advance as a zero, that is a zero-interest-free loan, well, doesn't, you know, doesn't look good if that came from somebody from a finance background.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramos.
Okay. Next comment, Elaine Marin.
Good evening, can you hear us, Ms. Marin?
Sorry. I didn't realize it switched to like a regular Zoom.
Name and address, name and, name and address, please.
Sure, Elaine Marin, 77th Street.
Please proceed.
Sure, I also have some concerns about FL-163 and paying back this loan, especially during a pandemic. So I don't have a financial background, but I'm just questioning the timing of this. Last year, we saw that, you know, there were items that we needed like PPE and technology and making the district one-to-one. And I think if. And I think, if anything, we've learned this year that anything can happen. And it just seems like really poor timing. We're trying to get these kids back safely and full-time, and I just feel like in September, who knows what the expenses are going to be? And I know that we have a budget, but there is some room to play around in the event of an emergency, and we're trying, like I said, to get these kids back full-time and, you know, eating at lunch. And I imagine that that is going to be costly. So I really have a question about doing this right now as opposed to waiting until we are kind of in a better place worldwide and locally to give back money that we don't really need to give back right now. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron.
Okay, bring in the next attendee. Okay, our next member of the public is Brian Cooney. Hello, Mr. Cooney. Name and address for the record.
What do you need, Mr. Cooney? He might be on mute.
Thank you. Got you. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Thank you. Brian Cooney, 93 Hobart Street, Mitchell Park. First of all, I'd start off by saying, you know, thank you to all of the board trustees and President Gibbons, you guys doing a great job. I know the, the tireless effort and thankless job that you have to do. And I want to also reiterate what Mr. Coloma had said. I visited the bathrooms and I was amazed by seeing it. So we are, we are definitely moving in the right direction. I am concerned, however, with paying off a loan that is interest-free early. I don't see the benefit of it. Where is that money being taken from? Actually, I know you're not gonna answer me, but maybe that could be put towards more capital, capital growth, so that we could just keep getting the, the schools better than they are. They look, they look great. They look really great. And, and I, I think Mr. Demakoff is, is, is a, is a, he's put there as a guardrail to make sure we do well. And from my three years knowing Mr. Demakoff, he's always had the best interest in our, in our students in our district. So I think it would be a big mistake to pay off early. Then that's just my personal opinion, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooney. And as I said before, we do have a finance committee coming up in the near future to discuss this further. But no educational initiatives we cut, things will be delayed possibly, but nothing educationally at all. Thank you.
Okay, our next member of the public. Mr. Loyacana, do I have somebody in the queue? Who is it, please? Yeah, it's hard to find, because these are alphabetic on Zoom, so.
If we could, if we could get to the new ones first, if it's possible.
All right, so who's our next one? In Serrano? Okay. In Serrano, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, hi, thank you. Nancy Serrano. Nancy Serrano, 21 Grove Street, Mitchell Park.
Thank you, please proceed.
So I just have a question, as finances are important, and I find these meetings interesting. I was wondering about the status, even though I know I recently brought it up with the Lincoln School principal and the teachers. The programs that are being offered after school and for the assistance are beyond greatly appreciated, as I'm sure plenty of students, you know, do need the assistance, and grateful that there are, teachers are available for it. But on my own personal end, I did find it quite disappointing because I physically sit there with my child to see that the stuff is not being properly prepared, and no one is really monitoring or following up. Like, have you guys, I listened to the beginning of all your statistics of how great we were doing academically and all that. But I kind of feel like that's not the case with this. Like, is anybody monitoring the progress of this assistance, even actually helping the children? And for, for an example purpose, let's say like the math program that's being offered for the elementary students. I was not aware that it was going to be mixed up with all of the schools. So each school is at different levels. As I watched the teacher, very lovely, nice guy, really had no idea, really had to assist in depending which, which school the child was in. I, I more saw that it was quite frustrating and disappointing. Is there any follow-up to that, even though I know I recently had just brought it up earlier this week? Or any feedback you can provide us with?
Mr. Serrano, I'm gonna ask, did you speak with the building principal or your classroom teacher? Because that's the challenge.
I did.
And, and that would help. So that would be great feedback that they need to hear.
I did, and I included yourself as well, but I did not hear back from you.
You didn't hear back from anyone? Okay, I'm sure that someone will be in touch with you tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, next attendee, Mr. DeSantis. I believe you're still with us. State your name and address again for the record, sir.
Hello, does the sound better this time? Can you hear me? All right, thank you. And I'm trying, I got cut off too. The, the point being is that there's probably a lot of things that should be done still to the buildings. A lot of issues that district wasn't able to do for so many years. It just makes no sense. And I'm not gonna take the full three minutes, I'm gonna take a few more seconds to pay back an interest-free loan when we don't know still the further consequences of this pandemic. We don't know if we'll have to invest in more technology next year. And if the finance committee hasn't picked the area, I would hope that either the board rejects this resolution tonight, or at least postpones it to a different meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bring in the next attendee, please, Mrs. Loyacana.
Jimmy Coloma, 145 Poplar again.
Thank you, please proceed.
Good evening. So again, I, I keep hearing there's no cutbacks in education, and there will be delays in others. So if there was a budget already approved, and there were programs that were going to be expanded, or curriculum expanded, or special ed, or special needs, or infrastructure, again, I don't understand why that would be delayed. What would the purpose of that be? Hopefully, when you get to address it, you do detail that out and specify why decisions were made, or what specific changes will be made. And the last thing is just a suggestion, if we can, like other boards or other districts, I don't know how complicated it is, but if there could be some sort of automated clock, because I think when people are trying to wrap up their conversations, it's, they're rudely abruptly cut off. So I think it'd be nice and courteous if there was a clock, this way we could respect each other and have a smooth transition when speaking, or getting the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
I agree with that, Mr. Coloma. It would be very helpful to me as well.
Next, please.
Thank you.
Miss Loyacana, our next, who is it? Okay, Mrs. Tabasco, name and, name and address again.
Hi, sorry. I didn't mean any disrespect with the questions. I know the amount of time and effort that everyone on that board makes and puts in. Some people don't even have children in the school, and you're still putting the time in. And as someone who doesn't have children in the school anymore, I still put in the same amount of hours, so I fully understand that. But I can't see wasting money by sending it back, and I say wasting money because this is money that we need to hold on to. You don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know what programs might have to be held off. And with everything that was going on in a pandemic, and these kids losing out on everything, even my daughter missing a graduation, not getting her senior prom, why would we do away with money now and then postpone stuff? Like, that doesn't make sense. If we have a program and we have money now, why would you do that to the children and take that part away from it? And my other question is, Mr. Demakoff, if you see something like this being done, and the state does not think it would benefit the town, do you have a right at that point to overrule any resolution that the board has made? Because I honestly don't know. I'm just asking for reference.
Well, this, this matter would be taken under advisement, and a decision would be made following discussions with Trenton. They may be, I mean, first of all, we do not know at this point going forward what the financial aid might be for any district. You recall a year ago, we were given money, and then $500,000 plus were taken back by the state, and our state aid was reduced.
Correct.
We're not, we're not sure, and no one can give the answer as to whether going forward, we will continue to have the state aid that we will have. The state may be under financial problems, and they may decide they want the money. They may decide, no, we gave it to you. You should use it the way it was intended. And I have to tell you, there's been about 11 districts that have had a state monitor, and nobody has given back money prior to the release of the state monitor. Just wanted to go on record. This would be probably one of the first, and I don't know how the state would react to that being done, whether they would say should have used it better, or there's mismanagement there to give it back. Nobody knows what they might say, but nobody has ever done it because they've used that money for things that they didn't have before, knowing that they might not get state aid in the future as they had this year or the last year. So there's so many unknowns, there, I would not have any answer for you how the state will react to this. They may take it and may say, great, I got another $500,000, or they may say, since nobody has ever done that before, why would this district do it? Maybe we have to look a little closer at this district, that they have all of this money? Maybe we have to send the state auditors back in there to see how could they ever do this? It's such an unknown at this point. So I can't, this is Tabasco, I can't give you an answer about what would happen here. It's really an unknown, and there's no precedent for it, because nobody has done this before.
Just a quick, just a quick follow-up, not with Mr. Demakoff, with Mr. Gibbons. And, you know.
I don't know how much pub, how many members of the public.
Well, it'll be, it'll be super quick. So, so my thing was, with everything being taken away from these kids for the past year, now things are probably starting to open up. Why would we delay by, if the money is there and you want to pay this back to the state? Why is it in such a rush today to get it out to them when we don't know what's gonna happen in six months? Why don't you then?
If you look at the budget, and Mr. T is gonna attest to that, you can see what money we have. And it is a bite to the community that we do owe money to the state. You know, I don't think the state is gonna say to give it back.
Okay, but you said that, no, but you, but you responded.
No educational initiatives will be cut, and nothing will be cut at all, you know.
Well, you said that some things may be delayed.
Further in finance. I really apologize, Mr. Tabasco. We're gonna move on to the next member of the public.
Okay, I'll have to get back in queue again. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, Miss Loyacana, please advance the next member of the public. Who is it? Please state your name and address for the public. Did we lose her? I don't see her anymore on my screen. Did she? Sylvanas? Salas?
Correct. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
It's Silvana Salas. I live in 144 30th Street, Richfield Park, New Jersey.
Please proceed, please proceed.
Hi, I am not a financial specialist, but I do, I'm, I am responsible for project controls for construction. And I believe if there is some money that you're planning to pay, it will make sense that you're paying in advance when you have an interest that needs to be paid over the principal. Given the conditions that we're in, being very fluid, not only with the kids, but with, with the health of the community, and with the government, with all the aids, financial aids that people are getting, you can watch any news, you can ask any expert. Everyone is saying, hold on on paying off any debts that you have. Make sure you have your needs covered. So I am pretty sure there will be a bunch of initiatives that, that you can get from, from any parent in town what that money could be used for. So I, I don't understand. And again, you cannot guarantee that there will be no educational programs being cut, because you don't have a, I don't know, a ball to see the future. If you guarantee that now, that means that at some point, you're gonna take it out of your own pocket to say, I guarantee with my own money, this won't be cut. And I, I know, no, none of you in the board will do that. So why don't we build an emergency fund for something? Because the conditions right now are very fluid, and have been like this for a year already. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Miss Loyacana, please advance the next member of the public. Who is it?
Hi, Christina Ramos, 3A2 Teneck Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Demakoff. Do, I'm just, you know, assuming that the decision that was put out there in regards to repaying back the loan ahead of time was done by the finance committee?
I can't tell you. In fact, I'm going to ask the question when we get to that resolution.
Okay.
How that happened, because I was not aware that the resolution was coming on the agenda. I was aware that there was discussion of, in certain committees, that, that maybe they should look into paying back the loan earlier, but I was never told that it was going on as a resolution. And my question, I will have some questions on that resolution when we get to it.
And the board knows, you know, that these kind of decisions or discussions should be run by you, correct?
Well, I thought they did. That's, I didn't think I had to write a memo to them or stated publicly, but I want to stop this snowball from rolling down a hill and getting out of control. That's why I'm putting some stopgap.
And I appreciate you. I appreciate you for your, you know, your determination of keeping things, you know, in line and in order as they should be and as they always should be. And hopefully, going forward, they, you know, everybody involved will know that, you know, these kind of discussions need to go by you and, you know, or if they knew, and, you know, I would like to also know the reasons why you were left out, you know, of these discussions, because I think that your key point, you know, your key, you know, in all of this. So I'm just, you know, that's also something alarming, a red flag for me, not only making such a decision that really doesn't make sense, as you've heard from, to anyone, even from people from not a financial background, why they would do this without consulting you or discussing this with you and leaving you in the dark about it.
Well, I think some higher-ups are concerned about that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Demakoff.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
Okay, we haven't, please promote the next member of the public, Mrs. Loyacana.
Hello?
Yes, Mrs. Tabasco, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'll be really quick. You know, I didn't want to come off like being harsh, and I'm sorry if I, I did. My husband said I sounded a little harsh there, and I don't want to, because you guys are doing a tremendous job. We have an exceptional educational program. My, my whole thing coming as a coach is, I know the mental state of what our kids have gone through, and I know what some of them are still going through. So to hear that other programs may be delayed, I think at this time is not the best thing for the student's mental health. And I do feel that if you want to hold on to the money and pay it off in six months or eight months, once we get all, every program up, which would never be delayed, and like really show these kids that, all right, you went through this bad past year. Here we are, we're gonna go guns ablaze, and we're gonna do everything we can to make every program we can exceptionally better than ever before. And I'm concerned about the mental health of the children. Like I said, our, our educational programs are top-notch, our sports programs are all coming back top-notch, as we always have. I'm also worried about the mental health. So if it's such a big rush, put the money on the side. Let's make sure that we have everything we need for the mental health of our kids, and every program could run effectively. and every program could run effectively, efficiently and on time and not delayed. So that's where like my other concerns coming in. And I, I do appreciate every ounce of effort that all of you put in there on the board. Dr. Bender, again, you are absolutely amazing, running the, the whole helm over here. And, and, and Chris, you know how much respect I have for you. So it's no disrespect to anybody and I just wanted to make that clear.
Agree, you know, everything social, emotional, and everything for our student. Absolutely. Thank you for that. I appreciate it, Mr. Tabasco.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one more. Who's the next member of the public, Mrs. Loycon? Nancy Serrano. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Nancy Serrano, again, twenty-one grocery, Retro Park. I'm sorry, this question is for Dr. Bender. Um, Dr. Bender, I know everybody here is a little, uh, aggressive now with this whole finances. Um, I really would like to stick to the education as, as I sit here and I listen throughout this meeting, you often promote, you know, how great we're doing. And I feel that every time a question is being asked, you quickly gear us towards having to email someone else. In my personal opinion, I'm having difficulty understanding why you are unable to answer a question with regards to the kids' academics. If I as a parent am telling you that there's concerns about why no one is monitoring these extra, um, help assistance that's being offered, I, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I failed, I, I'm struggling with my own ignorance of even ask, having to ask this question. Why are you unable to provide me some kind of feedback of your own personal knowledge of what's going on with these programs? Like I don't, I don't understand, why do I have to email anybody if we're on a public forum where these are all the schools mixed in? Um, it's a little disappointing that maybe not enough other parents are on this or maybe they're not sitting with their child to see what's going on. Um, I'm doing my best. Um, I try to take opportunity to listen in on these meetings and I do see other parents ask questions and constantly being brushed off. I don't want to discuss the finance as I keep hearing about, you know, discuss it at a finance meeting. This is about my child's education. And yes, I have followed up with the teacher, with the principal, but these are all three schools that are being mixed in. I don't understand why I can't get the answer from yourself as to why someone has dropped the ball and not monitoring these programs. Thank you.
Are you speaking into your microphone?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Doc? Okay, I'm, Mr. Rann, I, again, I'm going to thank you for your comment. This, as you know, is a brand new program and it needs to be monitored. I cannot disagree with you at all. I wholeheartedly agree with you. Uh, I have actually, uh, Dr. Haynes in the audience, so maybe we can pull him up as well. I am the superintendent of schools and it is my job to take all of your feedback and make sure that anything that can be fixed or should be fixed or needs to be fixed gets addressed. So unfortunately, I'm not in the classrooms and if I didn't see it happen myself, that's why I'm very appreciative that you're bringing it forward to us. And if you spoke to the building principal or the teacher, I think that that's a great first step. And then, you know, it has to get addressed. I cannot disagree with you. I'm not here to disagree with you. So I appreciate your comments. Is Dr. Haynes up?
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, Dr. Bender in the Board of Education.
Good evening, thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Um, Mrs. Rann, yes, we are monitoring the program. Uh, in fact, today we had a meeting of all the teachers involved in the program to get feedback. As Dr. Bender said, it's a new program. Um, it's something that hasn't been tried. It's for struggling students and we wanted to get a sense of how things are going. And what, what we heard today, there were two or three administrators in the meetings today. What we heard was actually phenomenally good about all the successes. I will say there are some things that we have to do better on and I will admit that. And that's why we have the meeting today and we will have ongoing meetings of what things we can do better. I would be more than, I, I haven't had any, uh, discussions with you or emails, but I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with you about specific issues that you have, uh, because we can always use program improvement. There are challenging times and we have struggling students and we are trying different means to address all of the individual student needs. I was thrilled with what I heard today, but I'd be happy to talk to you about making the program better.
It's important to get feedback, so I do appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. All right, that was the last, uh, comment, uh, Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to move on to resolutions. Trustee Rodriguez, can you please move faculty and programs?
I still move F P sixty-one through F P sixty-six.
Second.
No, I'll second it.
I can't see him. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Okay, any comments, questions regarding resolutions, F P sixty-one through F P sixty-six? Seeing none? Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Theman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosselli?
Yes.
And President Gibbons?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Um, I'd like Mr. Uh, trustee Fernandez to move finance before that. I'd like to move, um, F I one sixty-three separately. Uh, this is a resolution to pay more of the state debt that the district owes. Um, as the discussion with administration, educational initiatives, uh, will be cut at all. Um, and funds will not be used for anything educationally.
So we're going to do F I one sixty-two first, Mr. Gibbons?
Uh, yes, we can. And, um, also to say to that, um, is a blight on our village that we still owe money to the state. Um, and if you, if you look at the budget, we do have the money now to pay some more off and we could possibly pay it off a lot quicker than we were supposed to previously. Thank you.
So we need a motion. We require one sixty-two. And who's my second? Mr. Theman, thank you, Mr. Theman. Any comments, questions regarding resolution F I one sixty-two?
Yes, I think we should have a little bit more discussion item.
One sixty-two. Yeah, we're only voting on one sixty-two right now. We're going to do one sixty-three separately. Okay, any further comments, questions regarding resolution F I one sixty-two? Seeing none? Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Theman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosselli?
Yes.
And President Gibbons?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Make a motion for, uh, trustee Fernandez.
Yes, I'd like to, um, move, uh, F I one sixty-three.
Second.
Mr. Theman, thank you.
Uh, I have a question before you take a vote on this. Um, Mr. Gibbons, maybe you could enlighten me and maybe some of the others. How did this resolution get on the agenda? Was this the resolution that you decided to put there? Did you contact each and every one of the board members and get a consensus by majority of the board that you were going to, that they were in favor of this? How did this resolution come to be?
I asked our attorneys, um, how to discuss things with the board and I discussed with each board member separately, not asking the same questions. And as long as this was brought up in the public, it was allowed, it was allowed to be discussed like that. Uh, also, we represent the community and we are going to vote on this today. That's why we're making the motion. Uh, it was discussed in finance twice and you answered to it. Uh, when initiatives were put forth, we were never asked, um, if any more of the budget were to be paid back. Um, so if we got, um, word that this wasn't, you know, we didn't want to do this, then it wouldn't have been brought forward at all.
So in other words, you had the majority of the board, uh, in favor of this after you contacted them, is that correct? That's why I got on the agenda?
By our attorney, had a contact and I did.
And how about changing the wording of the resolution? Was that something that you did yourself? Was it the consensus of the majority of the board to take wording out of it after the agenda was sent home to the board?
We read the wording, I'm sorry to interrupt. We read the wording, educational initiatives to be cut and no one was in agreement with that. And those are questions initially about educational initiatives and none of them would be cut. And I believe we'd be in agreement with that if it is voted in.
But you decided that. It was you or it was the majority of the board that, that said that? I just want to know about the wording of it because I wasn't part of that, so I'm just asking the question.
Well, do you disagree? We don't think any educational initiative could be cut, but the majority of the board believes that as well.
So you contacted the majority of the board to change the resolution, that's what I'm asking you. Is it a yes or a no? That's all I want to know.
Can you ask the question again?
I asked the question of changing the wording in the resolution. It, was that something that you contacted the board about and the majority of the board wanted the wording changed? That's all I'm asking you.
Yes, in conversation, yes.
So you, okay, so the majority of the board was contacted on that.
Educational initiatives not being touched.
Okay, I just, I'm just asking you the question, that's all you did was a yes or no. Yes, you contacted the board and each of the people and they said they wanted it changed. So now I know how it was done because I, I was not informed of it before. I'm just asking the question. You have the right to do that. You have the right to put the resolution on and I have the right to ask those kind of questions, so that I just did. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I C C'd you on the email about it as well.
You did what? Pardon me?
I C C'd you on the email about it as well.
Yeah, after the fact, yes, you did. Thank you.
Can we table, uh, can we table one sixty-three?
Yes.
I have a question. Um, it doesn't say what you want to take the money from. My concern is, I, I understand you don't want to take from educational programs and that's great, but I'm also concerned with the safety, the buildings, you know, safety is just as important. Um, and it's left blank, so I personally can't vote yes to something blindly. You know, that, 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 that's my concern.
When, when discussed, uh, and what would be cut, would be, would be delayed, would be things that weren't. Um, that could be put down a little bit, but it was nothing to do with any education.
I'm sorry, he can't hear.
Um, nothing in that was, was, you know. That's why we're having a finance committee meeting.
Yes, Mr. Fernandez. Mary, I'm sorry, uh, as the chairman of the finance committee, um, at this time, we're just trying to allocate if, if there's excess funds in the budget. We don't, I didn't think we needed permission to allocate a line item in the budget preliminary, which it could also be reallocated elsewhere if needed for the, for the foreseeable future.
I'd like to make some comments. Okay, and, and I just wanted to ask one quick question. If there was a line item that showed that we don't have to delay or cut anything, that's what we'd be looking for, correct?
And and Mr. Demakoff, I, I, I know this district did take on his two-point-five million dollar loan entry in principle. But what the public is not understanding is that with that comes your salary for your services. Would you like to tell the public what you've made annually?
What's budgeted for my salary is one hundred and forty thousand dollars. And whether you pay off the loan early or not has no bearing on whether I would be paid going forward because that's not part of this issue.
Well.
So you don't save any money by me.
Historically, not many state monitors stay on for more than three, four years.
That's not correct. Absolutely not correct.
Okay, well, if we were to put your salary over the, the life of the loan, at five-point-six percent, so I want the public to understand that.
That's fine and you, you should also, you should also inform the public of the, uh, money that has been turned around here, the three-point-six million dollars that you wouldn't have had if we didn't go forward with part of litigation and, and the other things that were done by the state monitor to make sure the district got the money they were supposed to get. And, and, uh, you ought to be, be honest with them about that. So my salary has been more than paid for by the money that this district got back that they would not have normally have gotten back. That's why you're stable today.
To our interim B A who's done a fabulous job managing our funds.
I, Chris, I have, I have something to say and I'm, I'm a little bit nervous about saying it because this board has a history. I'm back soon. This board has a history of shouting down people when they start to speak. And the last time that I prepared something to say, which will be brief, uh, I got shouted down. So I expect President Gibbons to go to the forum and make sure that we all get a chance to express ourselves. And we have one line on this budget that is, that is half a million dollars. I think the public deserves to hear what our rationale is for voting for it. And if it's such a for it or against it. This, a month, a month ago, we did a budget presentation and, uh, we, we learned about long overdue curriculum, building projects. We learned about things that were, uh, have been neglected for many, many years. Uh, overdue, overdue equipment for teachers, books that haven't been updated in fifteen or twenty years. Our fields are wrecked, our bathrooms until very recently have been terrible. Uh, in the short time that I've been on the board, we have, we've had leaky roofs, uh, some mysterious lintels that were apparently falling. We had a roof that caved in in the summer, just, just two summers ago. Uh, but after that budget presentation, when I saw what Mr. Teves had prepared and what Dr. Bender had prepared, it was the first time that I've been on the board that I felt that we were really headed in the right direction and that it was going to be sustainable. I was in a really good mood for the last three weeks, uh, that we would have stopped fixing things with duct tape like we've done fifteen years. We heard from our excited administration, I had a little time to sit, sit and speak to each one of the new principals. They're excited, they're vibrant, they're smart, they, they, they were wagging their tails at the idea that they have this raw clay that they're going to be able to do something excellent with. And I was really excited. We then voted, we approved this budget in front of the public and I was feeling good, like I said. And I'm a skeptic, I don't feel good often. This week, a new resolution, a new resolution pops up. And yeah, it's been floated for a long time about paying off the, the loan early. But this resolution popped up to divert a half a million dollars from our kids and buildings to pay off the state early. This resolution did not come from a state monitor. It did not come from our B A or superintendent. It was not discussed with the entire board, uh, not in any official capacity. And you, you did tell us, Mr. Mr. Gibbons, what you wanted to do, but it was not discussed. And it was not until today that we're explicitly, uh, discussing it in public. It also did not come from me and it would not go away when I asked it to politely. I say that our kids have long, uh, waited long enough. I say let the state wait. Our kids have not only been waiting a couple of years for us to pay off this two-point-five million dollar loan. Our district has been waiting for many years. F one sixty-three diverts five hundred thousand dollars plus the two fifty that, that we were going to pay anyway. Uh, away from kids, away from teachers. Uh, for the first time, you hear teachers excited about curriculum, you hear them excited about the, the physical plant. When you sell a house or you buy a house, the way it looks and the way the, the bones of the building are one of the most important things. It's what makes you feel safe. The bones of these buildings are dilapidated. They've been neglected for, for decades. With one vote, we're going to take five hundred thousand dollars of, of your taxes and we're going to send it back to the state under the idea that the state monitor might go away. And you've heard his tone today, he doesn't look happy with this move or the way it happened. Uh, in my opinion, the only thing that the kids and the taxpayers gain from this resolution is the idea that we might get less oversight. I don't know who thinks we're ready for that. The idea that, that, that he's leaving unless we're acting correctly, wisely and consistently, I don't think it's going to happen. Now, we bring up the, his salary, that his salary, if we add it up, it does come up to about half a million dollars since he's been here. The cost of a twenty-year teacher, uh, take a math teacher for example, because I never liked math. Take a twenty-year teacher with fringe benefits and it's about his salary. Now, every one of our teachers is important, but the idea that we, that this is a deal breaker because of his salary is, is, quite frankly, doesn't make sense. Uh, we owe more than the two-point-five million. We owe the, the state two-point-five million, but we owe the taxpayers of Richfield Park a whole lot more than that. It's a huge hole that was dug because of the repairs that we didn't do for, for decades. So it's not just two-point-five million, that, that's the, that's the easy bait. That's what we owe the state, but we owe the people who paid taxes in this district for so long. That's, that's really what the price is and we have to divide his salary to see what the interest rate is on that loan. Personally, I think when you use the word blight, a blight is an infection. It's something that rots from within, it happens to plants. It also happened to this district over the course of ten, twenty years for many, many reasons, including less state funding. This, the state monitor is not the blight that, that. This, the state monitor is not the blight that that plagues this district. It's nepotism, it's lack of leadership for a long, long time. It's the fact that we, and I include myself, I I'm going to ask you not to interrupt me, but I'll include myself for not being vigilant. We're the reason that this district went down. I don't think my kids' education and my taxes need less oversight. I don't think the state who just gave us extra money. Now, think about this. They gave us extra money. Jim Tevis was very, very happy. They gave us extra money. I don't think they need it back early and I don't think they're going to be impressed and go away just because we gave it to them. In fact, I think quite the opposite because who pays off an in a a nearly interest-free loan early? Even if it's five percent, uh, it's 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 nearly interest-free. Now, the other thing, and some some parents did bring this up, is the pandemic. If this funding goes down next year, we can't call up the state and say, hey, could you give us back our five hundred thousand dollars that we paid early? We lose that money. We don't know if there's new strands coming out. We don't know if we're going to crash the economy with all the craziness going on in the world. And and we're banking on that, that that we're going to be okay forever. I I don't like that check that's being cashed. Uh, I've also written a lot of grants. And if there's one thing that's true for anybody who's written a grant with the government is you either use it or you lose it. And right now, we're literally telling the government, here, take back this five hundred thousand dollars. We didn't need it during the pandemic. What do you think is going to happen next year with funding? When you have all these other districts that haven't had enough money to 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 run their their districts? This is not a sound fiscal move on our part. This is an attempt to get rid of oversight or a misdirected fiscal attempt, if you just do the small math. The way to get rid of the oversight is to do better, uh, to put the kids first, to put education first, to protect our taxes. That's the big one. We're giving money back to the state. They they take enough of my money every year. And again, this board owes the kids and the people of Richfield Park much more than we owe the state. And and we've owed it for over a decade and a half. I say let the state wait. I think this is irresponsible and I'll be a no on F one sixty-three. And I want to thank you for letting me get that out.
No, thank you, Mar, Dr. Martinez. Um. Again, I asked everyone's opinion and I asked your opinion as well. Um, I'd never, and it was never brought up that paying back the loan would do anything with the state monitor. Uh, we all represent the community and the taxpayers. Um, and it is a blight on the community that we owe the state money and that we do have a state monitor, even though he has helped us get out of this financial strife that we were in. Um, so I'm going to ask that we vote on F I one sixty-three tonight?
And I want to ask the public to pay attention to how we vote.
Trustee Fernandez? Could we please move F I one sixty-three? Yep. I'd like to move, uh, uh, F F I one sixty-three.
Second. Okay.
Any further comments, questions regarding resolution F I one sixty-three?
And see? One question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and this could be reallocated further down the road, correct? From the budget? If there is, if 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 ever there's, uh, any, uh, shortages of any of any kind?
I don't know if I understand the question. We're talking about the proposed budget? We're talking about the current year budget?
The proposed budget.
It what could be, you mean if funds could be reallocated?
Yes.
A half a million dollars?
Yes.
I I can't guarantee that. I I, you know, we, because, I mean, for example, many of the facility projects that are contained in the proposed budget, I've already started giving the green, uh, the green light to the architect to start moving things forward because what will happen is we'll lose that money if we don't get meet the timelines of the D O E applications, that process of review, um, you know?
That wasn't my question.
No, it wasn't, no.
No, no. My question was, um, just to give a little more understanding to the public that if we do were to commit this five hundred thousand dollars, could this five hundred dollars be reallocated in the future?
To from where? I guess that would be my question.
Away from this line item and to something else.
First of all, you have an unbalanced budget.
It's not, I guess I'm misunderstanding, Mr. Fernandez, because the the.
Half million dollars is is not a buck, right? Okay, so what we have, we have to do something, right?
I I can't hear you, Mr. Tevis. I can't hear you.
Is that better? I'm just.
It's right there.
Yeah. Uh, oh, we can't hear maybe somebody. Uh, the time that we're talking, right? Is currently, uh, budgeting and issue of salary and health and supply and all that stuff. And then all the, you know, facility and technology issues, they're included in the proposed budget. So if we do this, I'm going to need to know, right? If I was, you have to know as part of the solution is what are we going to try to reduce? Uh, in the budget made of that money? That's so.
Unbalanced budget, the way if you were to take this, you have an unbalanced budget. You have to, you have to reduce something someplace. Otherwise, you have a budget that's not in balance.
Mr. Tevis, how many luxury items are in the budget?
Can't hear you, Chris.
Can you hear me now? No.
Oh.
Yeah. How many luxury items are in the budget?
Luxury.
I I don't have luxury items. I I I, there's no hot homes, there's no cars. Yeah. I've always known you to be very conservative and you've never given us good news without, uh, without you being a hundred percent sure. So I know that your budget is really focused on water, basements and keeping borders running and keeping the roof over our kids. Yeah, I also, like I pointed out, it's also been through three major audits within the last twelve months that I've done quite often because of that, obviously, of course. So, Mr. Fernandez, I'm sorry, I really answered your question, not the reallocation. It it was like, Mr. Demakoff, put me down. I've been doing this for such a long, long time, I forget that, yes, what are you going to count funding for that, right? But you're a town, so, um, you know, the only things additional payment that you have to cover is something else in the budget, uh, to make the move there. Uh, Mr. Can I ask, well, just what what can you guarantee me to get to that side of your plan here? Yeah, I, you asked me. I'm not.
They get, it's not my initiative. Um, it was asked what everyone's opinion is. This is, this would be our initiative if it was passed. Um, what would happen was instead of four and a half years to pay off the state debt, we would do it possibly in two to three years and we would have no more. Well, if we're not cutting any educational initiatives, we're not going to cut any educational initiatives anymore. We're prepared with administration that we will not agree to that.
Didn't you just tell me you have no clue what is?
But it also opens up an additional two hundred fifty thousand next year, no?
A hundred percent of your funds from last year spent on the kids? No, for the current, for the current year budget. Thank you. So if there ever is excess in prior years? Yes, it's called fund balance. It's actually not far, but yeah, prior and current. So so if you would like to tell us how much money you other funded the budget for the last three years? The last three years? Well, it's actually the last few years it hasn't been anything because the excess at the end of the year by the resolution went into capital reserve. And those capital reserve funds are what I'm using to move forward a lot of the initiatives in the last. Is it fair to say that not a hundred percent of the expenses we're laying out with budget is going to get spent? You're asking a hammer crystal ball. You know, when it's a deficit down here, I mean, right? So I can't say I guarantee you that, um, you know.
Mr. Mr. Tevis. Mr. Tevis.
But you went into deficit five years ago. So I I can't stand here and put this sort of flexible business management or tell you that I guarantee, you know, your family have money left over.
Mr. Tevis. There's Mr. Tevis.
Can you be a little harder?
I'm sorry. Mr. Tevis, we're less than ninety days away from the end of this school year. Where are we trending with the current year's budget to actual, actual to budget? I mean, in the last few years, we've had well over a million dollars every year at the end of the year that we've allocated the fund balance and kept well over the one and a half percent. And we've allocated the other monies to fund balance. So where are we currently actually dating for the two thousand, twenty, twenty-one school year?
Right. How many do you want? Not higher. How many do you want? Uh, or perhaps another down? Five hundred, another down. Is this?
Okay.
On the funding, it's on the other down? On the funding, it, I don't understand. No, and it's not, I don't think that's true. You, second.
It's very hard to hear, so I'm struggling to hear.
It's important to have some kind of reserves to grow at the end of the school year, right? It's a million dollars, right? It's a lot of moving parts there. Uh, again, for me to honestly even pay down to the power, you just don't need a deficit. That's your problem.
Again, that that's not the, that's not the question.
You can't alter the community. And then what you do is always, this is kind of other business administrator. You should move that one to capital reserve, maintenance reserve. And what we have to do is I walk the door, we're going to construct a project or with that capital reserve and make it reserve funds. Can I ask that question? So it's not, it's not, not early. Can I ask a question as a late person? Do do we have a big stack of money laying around with no home and no place to be using district this year or next? Because that's what we will pay off, uh, an interest over early is if you you have a big group over your house, everything's prepared and cluttering, hard to clean off. And then you go to the financials of the interest. We are in good financial standing. And you can see that in the budget. Next year, next year, our economy can crash and you won't get it. And since.
And next year then we'll have an additional two hundred fifty thousand.
You think if the economy crashes that we won't have to pay the two hundred fifty thousand next year? They'll just say, don't worry about it?
No, they're going to ask for that money.
Nick, did you think something?
Know that.
Sorry. What was it? I didn't know. Mr. Petroz, were you speaking? I didn't know if you were talking or.
I I I was trying back. It it's very hard to hear because it's coming coming through very unclear. My only point was is over the last four years or so, we have put quite a bit of money into, um, capital reserve and to maintenance reserve. I mean, a couple of years ago, we were looking at well over two million dollars coming into the last few months of the school year and we wound up buying a bunch of other, uh, we had money and we bought iPads and we bought computers or whatever they're called, whatever the proper, uh, terminology is. And my question is where were we, where's the run rate for this current year? And if there's money that we're able to put in capital reserve, that's fine, but we only allowed to keep one and a half percent. We've been struggling with this over the last couple of years that we due to either good finance management or over budgeting certain line items that we've had a lot of money coming in to the last three or four months of the end of the year. And just, I guess the question is, you know, Jim, let's be, let's be very frank here. Let's be very honest that we've had well over a million dollars the last couple of years that you've been, you've been here. And we come to the end year and we start looking to purchase things and use the money because we can only keep so much and put the rest in the reserves. I mean, is that not accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. So I guess the question, so I guess it begs the question that if there's money this current school year and we only have so much we can put in this, you know, uh, because we're a district in in deficit, we can only keep one and a half percent as opposed to two percent that other districts can keep. And we we have quite a bit in reserves. We just want a huge case against the teachers, uh, union in the excess of a couple of million dollars. I guess the question is a very fair question. Is there a couple bucks that we have at the end of the year that we can allocate towards this debt? I don't think it's an unfair question. I mean, look at how all the things, look at how all the things, let me finish the point. Look how all the things have dropped over the last twelve months. I mean, it's it's a good story and it's a story that, hey, listen, if there's if there's ability to pay to pay some of this down while we have it because we're going to the end of this year and we're going to, I'm assuming have at least a million dollars again. We're going to put one and a half percent away. We're going to look to see what we can put into the, uh, into the reserves. We have, I mean, what is the current amount that we have in the reserves for both, um, for both capital reserve and for maintenance reserve as this current school year? I guess another question, I mean, we have millions, don't we?
Uh, we have four million.
Okay, that's four million, right? I mean, it's a lot. I mean, we're not, we're not talking about paying off one point two five million. We're just asking, we have four million in capital reserve. Should we have a couple hundred thousand, if not more, in maintenance reserve? I just, I think it's a fair question to ask. That's all. Based on all the information and all the data, it's a fair question. That's all.
Yes, I listen.
The proposed budget took all of the capital reserve money for the, uh, planned construction projects for twenty-one, twenty-two year. Uh, there's some, there's some maintenance reserve funds, but I took both the capital reserve and the maintenance reserve in the proposed budget to push forward this.
I obviously, I I unfortunately can't hear a word you're saying, but.
He either has unmute or everybody needs to mute. One or the other.
Okay, and I quit each of the proposed, the proposed budget and I'm pulling it out of capital reserve. And that's what's causing a large share of the construction projects that we're moving forward with twenty-one.
Jim, is it fair to say?
Unmute yourself. Unmute yourself and we can hear you better. Try that because I can't hear you either. Jim? Yeah. Try that. If you unmute yourself, maybe we can hear you better.
Try it.
When Dr. Bender did it, we were able to hear her better before.
Is that better? Is that?
Is that better?
Much better, much better, yes.
So, all right, so let me repeat. The budget plan, my budget plan as a B A, so you can get feedback now.
Yeah, turn up the mic.
Um, my budgeting plan as a school business administrator has always been to plan for excess funds at the end of the school year so that you do not run yourself into a deficit. I have been a business administrator for almost twenty-two years and assistant business administrator for nine before that. I have worked in education since I was twenty-five years old and I know how to do proper budgeting. I have never once even came close in my entire career to running a school into deficit, not even close. Better to plan the other direction, which I've always done. Because the plan is leave yourself excess funds at the end of the year and you are able to move that money into capital reserve and maintenance reserve, right? So that you can then budget for facility and and maintenance for this within the district. That has always been my budgeting plan as a school business administrator and it always will. I will never apologize ever for having excess funds left in the school year. Now, what the board chooses to do with that, to the board, I I, that's fine. You just tell me what to do and I'm okay with it. But if you ask my opinion, I'm telling you right now, I will budget one left over at the end of the school year and not put the district in jeopardy. So I just felt like I was getting accused of having too much money at the end of my budget.
No, no, no. Mr. Tevis, I I want to be very clear. I never at any point accused you of anything. I merely asked the question and stated a fact. And this was also happened, this also, we had also excess money prior to you being here with Mr. Steinmetz. So I did not, I don't think at any point accused you of anything. I merely stated a fact that we have had excess money going into the fourth quarter of the fiscal year for the last three or four years.
Yes, and I.
And I know for a fact that we've also made some expenditures in because of how we were running at the end of the year. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's all my point was. I don't think at any time I said, Mr. Tevis didn't do a, did, no, somehow, you know, did something wrong. I don't think that was ever.
No, no, I'm getting hit, I'm getting hit with questions from different board members, Mr. Petroz, and I'm starting to get a little.
Okay, but I just.
I just.
General statement, ask general question.
And I'm fine with it. But I just don't want everybody to think that there's some kind of a master plan by the business administrator to have millions of dollars.
I don't think I ever, I I never insinuated that. If I did, then that's that's your perception. I just merely stated a fact.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one que, uh, comment, Mr. Gibbon.
Yes.
At some point, you're going to have to decide where this five hundred thousand dollars is going to come from. Because you, otherwise your budget is not in balance going forward in twenty-one, twenty-two. So you're going to have to at some point decide what is being removed from the budget that was presented preliminarily and to offset this five hundred thousand dollars.
Interesting.
I'm saying to you.
Mr. Gibbon, I'll end here.
I can't, I can't hear you.
Um, we're going to have a committee, uh, trustee Fernando stating and we'll discuss that further. You'll be in attendance. Dr. Bender will be and Mr. Tevis as well. I think that's going to require another vote, isn't it? If we're going to have two items or or several items that are going to be cut out of the budget, I think that's going to require another vote. I don't think this on your own or even the finance. I'm not doing anything on my own, um, Dr. Martinez. But, um, I'm to vote on it, um, we're going to vote on it now.
So uh, we've already moved FI one three, seconded the motion.
Yes, okay, Mr. Yep, Mr. Fernandez.
Oh, we vote on this right now?
Uh, sorry, this is resolution FI one sixty-three.
Just so everybody's on the same page, I may have a time item, just so there's a, uh, other version. Somebody agreed to this.
Excuse me?
Maybe you.
I can't hear, I cannot hear.
Try to.
I, I, I will, we have this, we do have the funds. And now we hear any, any initiative, indication, um, you know.
Chris, you gotta talk into your mic.
And um, we have funds, but you know.
Every, every, every initiative that we have in this district is an initiative for education. The building, the heat is, the, is the.
Nothing will be.
We're not cutting coal off of it.
If, if, if something that's not essential has to be played, we'll be discussing it anyway.
One thing I really, I think I really have to point out with resolution FI one sixty-three is it speaks solely to the proposed budget, not the current year budget. The question, Mr. Fajros, right, and Mr. Fernandez too, that pertains to the current year twenty-two one budget, correct, Mr. Fernandez? Right. I cannot, will not, I'm sure you're not asking me to, to tell you that we project on having excess funds at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. You're responsible to do that.
That will be the discussion for next year, correct?
About the discussion, I mean, we get to this time next year, absolutely. But what I want to point out is that the resolution pertains to the twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget. Okay, not the current year budget. So there's no excess funds contained in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. If we don't budget for excess, obviously we can't, it's.
Can I make a last?
The supplement will be cut, that's my whole point.
The reserve, the capital reserve.
In this, that's not this resolution, we'd have to reword it, we can do it, but we'd have to reword the resolution if you wanna look at this year's excess funds. We can do it, you just have to reword the resolution.
Still have to make a decision on what you want.
What is the, I, I'm, I'm really unclear what the rush is to get this resolution today. I really, we have a divided board, it's a bad look in front of the state monitor, it's a bad look in front of a hundred people that are here.
I don't know where you're discussing it yet, and it's something rushed, this one, this is what, for a year.
No, some people have discussed this for a year, yes. Some people wanna give it to police departments and a bunch of other.
As one, if it is, and wishly items were discussed, it was never discussed with the board if you would like to pay back excess. As we present the community to do so if we wanted to.
We have a divided board.
When we get the line item, considering we can find it without.
Mr. Gibbons, I, I, I don't wanna interrupt you, but I, I, the public has got to be having a hard time hearing you. Um, the, the voices are very garbled and it's very hard to, to hear what the discussion is back and forth, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, can you hear me now, Perry?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, my, my comment, Mr. Gibbons, that I can't imagine why we're discussing this today. Uh, through the, the monitor was brought on board, this is the most this board has discussed this in a month unless people are discussing this, moving to the board. But I am on the finance committee, this was not a big topic discussed on the finance committee, probably ten minutes, I don't have more than last minute. I don't understand why we're writing this check for five hundred thousand dollars at this time during a pandemic, during all this upheaval that we're having in the world. I don't, the rush is, and no one here on the board has guaranteed me what I'm gonna get for this five hundred thousand dollars. I still don't know what I'm gonna get for it.
So, Mr. Fernandez? Jim, is this something we can put off, uh, that we give a better understanding for other people on the board?
Sir, you, you could, um, you know, do a motion to table the resolution if you wish.
Would that be better for the board?
You could make a motion to table this resolution.
I second.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
And I, I would ask my board attorney to verify what I'm saying, but we simply do a separate resolution at this point to table it.
For reassurance.
So you have a, you have a, a motion that was made and a second to table. So the next vote that would happen would have to be the, the vote on the motion to table this resolution for the next meeting. And then if that vote is voted down, then you would go back and vote on the resolution itself.
And I understand, so trustee Fernandez is, as well as we're saying, we cannot trust it to find out whether. We're either.
Can we make sure that when we come back from some things, can we make sure that we're not, the public is trying to cut these non-educational educational funds? But that we're also gonna tell the public what they're getting for their five hundred thousand dollars and bring them back.
They get to be altered to be invested on this thing. Um, when you have a debt of knowing the dollars, the state, it, it does not go to you.
What about the debt that we owe the River Park community to taxpayers? What about that?
The initiative that I'm wanting are obviously working to help the children.
I mean, maybe we should charge, maybe we should lower the two percent cap on the taxes that we, that we, you know. Give that back to the taxpayers, since we have so much money apparently.
What about the years following? Won't, won't, won't we have additional money?
Won't we have two hundred fifty thousand extra for the, for everything?
Right or wrong? If you pay this off, you think the two, like if we don't pay this, you're saying that we.
We won't have to continue to pay two hundred fifty thousand? Because that's what you're acting like. You're just acting like we're spending an additional five hundred thousand, but you're still, if you pay this off, we'll have additional funds. It's not like we're just going away. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, we'll have additional funds number of years after, not in the total budget.
And how much more additional funds may it be, right? Dr. Martinez?
I'm sorry.
Could it be?
I didn't hear that.
No, how, how much more additional funds would it be?
It's five hundred thousand dollars this year.
Yeah, but then what, what, what are you gonna have additional next year?
Well, one of the first things that, that, that Mr. Tevis taught me when I was on the board, that the words surplus in a school system is, is non-existent. We talk about surpluses, especially in this, it's been neglected this long. There are no surplus, we're a long way from having a surplus. I, I'm sure there are plenty of projects, he's talking. Well, when I went to some schools and, and I, I, there's a wow factor when you walk in, you see the technology, you see their equipment. It's great that we've done some making, it's great that we're still not leaking, but there, there, there isn't a wow factor here yet. And I think I deserve that, I think the people deserve that. So if it's gonna take money from that today, I, I, I'd rather stay wait than wait. So even if it transfers to next year or the year after.
Dr. Martinez, I need to clarify, you said that there's, we're not even close to having a surplus, that's not true. Okay, in the current scores of the year, I am projecting somewhere between five hundred, six hundred thousand of excess surplus at the end of this current year. The plan, and there is a plan, is to move it into capital reserve and maintenance reserve. But we are projecting it, and I, the way I budget, as I explained before, you know, in all fairness to you, the whole board.
I appreciate how precise you are with words, and that's why.
And we have been dealing with that every year.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We have, we have every year.
Yes, we, we've pretty much depleted the capital reserve in the proposed twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Um, but again, the plan is we keep building it back up, you know, with the surpluses that we generated at the end of each budget.
Hey, Jim, I'm, I'm, the only reason why I asked to, to postpone this is maybe everybody will have a better clarity if we were able to give them what would.
I can't hear him.
I can't hear me either. Uh, Mr. Fernandez, could you talk into your mic, please? I'm hard to hear.
No, I'm sorry, uh, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Can't hear.
Finally, maybe if you give them, you know, who hold this vote, we can see the what line items we need to do or reallocate to do. Would that be fair?
I really think the only way you guys can do this is shut off your mics and turn and unmute yourselves. Because the echo with the mics is very hard to hear.
We do have to address the motion that's currently been first and seconded, and that's a resolution, it's, it's a motion to table resolution FI one sixty-three. So we do have to vote on that before we move back to resolution FI one sixty-three.
We have a vote, is that seconded on that?
We do, Fernandez made a motion and Dr. Martinez seconded a resolution to table resolution FI sixty, one sixty-three. Okay, so are there any further questions about the motion to table resolution FI number one sixty-three?
Yes, one last comment, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm gonna need, well, what's adding plus, or where reallocated is the word to be used? I'm living, I'm still not solving the rationale for paying this debt.
Okay, well, we're going, we're going back to resolution FI one sixty-three. Uh, Dr. Dr. Martinez, we're just right now, we're waiting on the resolution.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll.
Thank you, just the table of this now.
This is just a table, all right. Any further comments, question? To table resolution FI sixty, one sixty-three, seeing none, Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
On the resolution table, yes.
Mr. Fajros?
Yes.
Mr. Goines?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Thiemann?
Yes.
Mr. Bresseli?
Yes.
And President Gibbons?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, we now go back to resolution FI one sixty-three. I do first and I do have a second. Uh, I'm gonna ask the board attorney to explain the procedure behind this, we just tabled it. Uh, we had an affirmation from the board to table resolution FI one sixty-three. Could you just give me the next procedural step, please, Mrs. Wright?
Sure, so you would not take a vote on the underlying motion? The, the motion to table is basically a kindle motion to amend the first motion. So the board has made a determination to table one sixty-three. You can bring it up at your next board meeting and put it on that resolution and make a determination at that time. You do not need to take a vote now on one sixty-three.
I do not, correct?
You do not, no.
I just wanted to confirm that, okay?
No.
All right, so there'll be no vote, it was tabled. Okay, all right, so Mr. Gibbons, um, next set of resolutions is the consent agenda.
Yes, uh, use of facilities, CR twenty-four and twenty-five.
Who's my, my first, Mr. Gibbons first, thank you, and my second?
I have a question here.
Dr. Martinez, thank you.
I have a question on this.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bresseli.
Uh, just real quick, I was wondering, I thought that the boys' basketball was gonna be down at Lincoln School where they got a bigger gym. Why are we trying to squeeze two in at Roosevelt?
Especially when we're doing work there, aren't we repaving?
Want to take the paving or you want me to? Let me, let me start with the first part.
Jim, look, the Lincoln School is a larger gym, that's what I was told. The Lincoln School is a larger gym, not Roosevelt.
Right, he's correct when he said that. Mr. Bresseli is correct, what he just said. Mr. Bresseli, if I can answer part of your question, I had a conversation with coach and uh, he had requested. So I have no problem with making moves in facilities and we can.
Yeah, I don't want everybody on top. The other thing I was just wondering with that is this facility fee, are we charging all these programs? Facility fees, like, don't they pay for use or do we give it to them for free? Like, do they pay rent during the year or, uh, for the summer or is that free and now we're charging them a facility fee?
Right, so the only one that really gets charged a fee because they're considered an outside organization is the RP after-school program, which is the second one under Roosevelt School. That's the summer after-care program. They're the only ones that pay an actual use fee. The others are associated with the township, which can use the facilities project, we do not, uh, policy, sorry. You don't charge them. And the uh, camps for the basketball are directly associated with students, so you don't charge those as well.
Why do we only charge the RP after-care summer camp and not?
Because they're a, an outside organization. They're, it's actually written specifically into your policy, uh, regulations that they pay a fee.
I just thought, it, it came off to me, the reason I looked at it, that we were like double dipping, that if we, but I see what you're saying. The, the, the facility fee is the custodians, it's not a facility fee and, and you're getting charged for the custodians?
Yes, the only one I believe that doesn't pay the custodians is uh, town rec. Again, because that's, that's a whole different level, it's, it's considered a category two use, not a category, or category one, I should say. Um, all the others do get charged custodial use fees, yes. When it's over, we don't, we don't, we don't charge them if, say, the classroom is being used by the day by our students, by our regular education programs. Um, but if we, if they're the only use in the building on a particular day, then yes, we would assess some custodial fees.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Bender, I think you actually answered this already, but I don't see, um, I don't see out, outdoor use for the rec program and the summer after-care. Is that just the move that they're using the fields and?
Yeah, he's assuming they're using the fee. Could you talk into your mic a little bit, Mr. Gibbons, sorry?
Um, I see for rec and summer camp, I don't see any outdoor use, you have to assume that there are any, there are more facilities? Cause I don't see that on the. Well, I guess rec has.
Yeah, there, there's one or two, yeah.
So the RP after-care or summer camp program, they have, uh, Roosevelt field and the basketball, and is that?
Yes, if it's on there, I have to, I mean, I don't have the use of facilities application in front of me.
It's not on here specifically, but I'm assuming that.
Well, I mean, I'm not worried, we could work that out with them. I mean, look, the basketball hoops is a separate issue because that's something Dr. Bender from the state or the, about putting basketball hoops back up outside.
That was, um, part of the state's CDC and then NJDOH, uh, with playground use, so. I'm assuming by summer that that will be back to, you know, somewhat, what the new normal is. Can you hear me?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
It's hard for me to hear, um, I just had a question. So you mentioned the use of facility, um, application or form. So they specifically ask just for use of the first floor classrooms?
You've got.
Yes, yes.
So, so the after-care summer camp program only, only asks for the first floor classroom?
Mrs. Rodriguez, let me, I was listening to two people at one time, I apologize. So I had conversation with the applicant, Mr. Kilmary, and we discussed according to what he believes the needs are going to be. And that will have some flexibility. Does that make sense what I'm saying? He asked for a certain amount of rooms that we think that he'll need, but if there's change, you know, we'll open up the conversation again.
So there is flexibility in having the children use the outdoor and also the gym?
The gym is going to be used by.
Boys' basketball.
Boys' basketball, but I'm not sure right now if that's gonna, if he's gonna change his plans. We're still kinda up in the air. Uh, that, a new question came up just recently and I haven't spoken to Coach Gaskin.
If I could to make this a little easier, we've spoken to all of the applicants. Dr. Bender specifically took the time to do this. And she, and she, she's working out and trying to give everybody here the most space that we can possibly accommodate. Um, and there is, to answer your question, there is flexibility. If there's something on here right now on this, this applica, on this resolution, but we found out, you know, in another month or four or five weeks, if there's additional classrooms that open up or, or, you know, we can give it to them.
I need to, I need to address one other thing though, because Mrs. Rodriguez, we're also concerned with the fact that we are going to be using our schools, all of them, this summer for our own summer programs. That's why there's a concern with how many, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot going on right now, right? Because we don't know, uh, I was explained from Mr. Kilmary that he doesn't have yet the guidelines for summer camp. So he's gotta know what he's gotta follow for that. We don't know how many students we're going to actually get enrolled in our own summer programs that we have to have. We have not only those for extended school year, but we also have students that are gonna require additional support like we normally do, our title one students. And also the state has provided us with an opportunity with extra funding that we have to make sure that we use for students for mental health this summer as well as added enrichment. So we're addressing so many different curriculum areas and needs through the summer. And I hate using the word, uh, you know, the slot, the slide from COVID. I'd rather say the impact. from COVID. I'd rather say the impact that pan pandemic had. So we have funding that's come to us federally that we need to be able to use for our own students. So that's why there's, there's a lot of people that need to be placed and moved around. So and we're trying our best to accommodate everyone. Does that help?
It it's us, but I just finds it a little bit confusing because, you know, there are two programs. Um, you know, summer programs and that parents and the community and and, you know, our children do use. So for the recreation program, it's like so specific, you know, my 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 children have actually attended the recreation program. But it's just like so specific in that you have, you know, the RP After Care just, you know, the use of the first floor. I just wish that it was a little bit more specific, you know, um, you know, you have the rec program, they're using the field, they're using the bathroom, the track, the comm, and the library. All these, I just feel that it, you know, just if we're going to vote on it and, you know, it just has to be a little bit more specific.
So there's there's wiggle room. There is wiggle room in this, and like I said, I have spoken to each and every applicant.
Okay.
Two, the Town Rec and Mr. Kilmari's program has, oh, they've always run, you know, for the last, the Town Rec for sure, right? The his, it's a historical program. We get that. So we're trying to accommodate, of course, our children have to come first. But let me be perfectly clear. Our summer program rooms, classrooms, that's why there's a lot of confusion because there's also supposed to be construction happening. So there's a lot of different moving parts in this, and that's why I'm trying to be flexible. At the same time, all of them understand that our children through our educational programs have to come first because the federal government supports that. And all because of COVID and the situation at hand on how we've been remote, out, that kind of thing. We don't know when the number's going to break.
Thank you. This was on the agenda. Do we vote on?
Okay, um. Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Fittros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Thiemann? Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you.
145 through 153, I tell you.
Mr. Gomes, please my second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any comment? Any comments, questions regarding Resolutions P 145 through P 153? Seeing none. Mr. Thiemann?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Fittros?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez? Mrs. O'Neil? Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Is that a, yes? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
And Mr. President Gibbons?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
We also have, uh, we also have, uh, which is FI 164. If you'd like to add, um, trustee.
You do now. I'm sorry. Mary, thank. Okay, any comments, questions regarding new business resolution FI number 164? Seeing none. Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Fittros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes? Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Thiemann? Mr. Verselli?
Pass.
And President Gibbons?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, any members of, any members of the public wishing to attend, just raise your hand, give it a minute or two. Okay, I have one person so far. This is Lloyd Conne, if you could bring the, uh, person in. Uh, what's the name of the person you brought in, Mrs. Lloyd Conne? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mrs. Orvitz, you're on mute. How about now? Is that better? Yes. Thanks, Dr. Bender. Sure, it's Francine Orvitz for Persian Court. And um, I just wanted to call in, I I know everyone on this call and hopefully all of the board members know that one of our seniors was recently critically injured during a fire call in town. And he is a junior firefighter. I wanted to let everybody know how amazingly well he is doing and that he was brought home today. So I think everybody should give him a big round of applause. He was, he he was escorted home by the Ridgefield Park Volunteer Fire Department. Every single apparatus drove him home from Hackensack Hospital along with, um, apparatus from Englewood, where his dad is a paid firefighter. So I just thought everyone needed to know that our hero, Nick, is home. He's doing well. He has a long haul ahead of him and, um, but he's home. So if anybody still wants to send cards, the fire department is still accepting cards and they can be sent to my office, which is 50 Main Street, to the Fire Chief's office. We have a huge box that I'm telling you, we have to empty every two to three days because we are getting letters and cards and from all over the country, and we've even gotten them from around the world. So I wanted to let everybody know that. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Gibbons. You're so muffled tonight.
I'm sorry. I have a mask, you know, and we're grateful for your recovery as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for listening. Thank you for sharing that with us. That's really important for us to hear. Much appreciated.
Okay, I don't see any further members of the public wishing to comment, Mr. Gibbons.
Okay, we're going to close this comments off agenda items. Do we have any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? Okay, um, we're going to close session. We have a personnel matter to discuss for our final executive session.
Well, we have to do a motion to go into executive session. Which will adjourn, we will, so the intent is to not take action, I'm assuming. Right? All right, so the meeting, uh, will be ended, uh, at the end of closed session. We will not come back into public in that case, just for the members of the public in attendance. No further action will be taken. We will adjourn the meeting from executive session. Let me read the resolution. Resolved Education Retire to Executive Session for the Following Purposes. No contract negotiations. Your superintendent. Order of Education will not return to this public session and will be adjourned directly from executive section. No action will take place. Minutes of the executive session shall be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All in favor? Okay, that's the end of the public. End of public meeting. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.